Okay, great. Fantastic. All right, then, we, I think that we are, so we have everybody here, okay? I think we're, I think we're ready. Let's get this started so we can, we can be efficient tonight. All right, it is my pleasure to call to order the Abington Township Board of Commissioners' regular public meeting for February 11th, 2021, and let us start with the roll call.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Brodsky?
Here.
Bowe?
Here.
Carswell?
Here.
Rothman?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
DePoe?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Diplosito?
Here.
Weingrad?
Here.
Vehi?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Hecker?
Here.
Spiegelman?
Here. All right, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation,
under God,
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we don't have any announcements or presentations, so let's go right to public comments on agenda items. And, let me see, I'm gonna, I can't, let's see, okay, I can see, let me see if you can see the full attendee list here. All right, we have a, we have a caller with a hand up, so could please kindly let in the first caller.
Sure.
All right.
Speaker named L E L, your microphone has been unmuted, you just have to unmute on your device.
Can you, can you hear us?
Yes, same answer, yes.
Okay, so here, here we go. I am trying to get on, do you see Laura Lehman and L E L?
No.
Ms. Lehman, you're, you have two devices on, you have to mute one of them.
Okay, so, right, I just turned the volume down on the other one, is that acceptable? Can you hear now?
You, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, just so you know, I have asked endlessly if we could create a space, for instance, in the 10 minutes that we're waiting to get on, and I emailed Mr. Manfredi about it today, too, to solve these problems. So, you know, it is ridiculous to have them, honey. Do the, the thing. So, all right, so, the, and about 15 seconds before my time is up, I would like to have a heads up because I have one sentence that I would like to read. Okay, so, number one, you're, you have the disaster emergency on. You are abusing the disaster emergency policy. You are using it to take away our speaking time. There is absolutely no reason that you can't hold committee meetings, and at committee meetings is where we are allowed to address are all of the committee heads. So, please stop abusing that, and please do not declare a disaster that you don't need. Don't take any measures that you don't need. The second is the abuse of the minutes. When you approve the minutes tonight, again, if Liz Vial is, is actually meaninglessly paraphrasing these minutes, it's like we stood up and we said something about, you know, one issue. That's it. She stood up and said something about the Willow Grove Mall, she had concerns. It's not providing minutes. Minutes are supposed to provide what the residents said, the content. You can summarize it, but not meaninglessly. And I want to know whether that's Liz Vial doing that, or whether she's giving them to Mr. Manfredi, and he's doing that.
Ms. Lehman, please, please do not, please do not mention any of our township staff by name in a disparaging way.
There's no, there's no reason you can't. That's, that, that is actually not the law. The Sunshine Law allows you to do that, okay? You need to read that, Mr. Spiegelman. So, when I, again, the owner of the, of the Whole Foods is not on the application. Mr. Kaplan said that ago, they signed on to that. But years ago, there was a different owner, and I don't see any owner's name. So if the conditions in the Whole Foods lot are important for the 244 apartments, then he needs to be on the application.
You asked for the 15-second warning, so you can make your sentence, I'm giving you the 15-second warning.
Okay, so my sentence is, at the end of this, I, I am going to invoke, as soon as my minutes are up, I am going to invoke the right to use the Sunshine Law in order to say the perceived violations of the Sunshine Law. Okay, so as soon as my minutes are up, so don't cut me off, tell me when my minutes are up. I am against you.
Your time, your time, your time is now, your time is now up. Thank you for calling.
Yeah, can I finish this?
Your time is concluded. All right, there is someone listed as Galaxy S10 as a caller, if they could please be let in.
Yeah, hi, my name's Teresa Case, I, I thought my, my name would come up. I have a few questions, I don't know protocol, I'm gonna tell you that right off the bat, but I have a few questions. Okay, we're putting in 244 apartments. Has anyone considered how many more children will be coming to the neighborhoods for the schools? How many more people will be utilizing all of the services that Abington has to offer? Has there been any money set aside for these items?
Ms. Case?
To be taxing to not only our schools, our trash, our public works, our everything.
Ms. Case, if I can, if I can actually.
Progress happens.
Ms. Case, if I can, if I can interrupt you, I just, I want to let you know, because I think this might be helpful to you. On February 23rd at 7:30 PM, there, there's going to be a planning commission meeting during which Preet, the owner of the mall, is going to be presenting.
I'm not talking about Willow Grove Mall, I'm talking about this location in Baderwood.
Oh, I apologize, I'm so, I am very, very sad.
I know you recognize who I am, this stands for all of Montgomery County, Abington Township. And I know that meeting is scheduled for the 20, for the 23rd. My, my concerns is for all new building projects in this area because it's going to be densely populated, and we need to have adjustments for all of those things. The schools are going to become more crowded, we're going to need more teachers, more space. Has anyone considered or have funds set aside for those items?
I actually can answer that question. The school district, because the school district is not only one of the property taxing entities, but actually the majority property taxing entity on all Abington Township commercial and residential properties, the school district actually has to sign off on, on any development plans that are going to bring any kind of population, potentially add to the population of the township. So the answer to that question is yes, that is all reviewed and vetted by the school district.
So this is already taking place for this new project?
Yes.
Do we, do we have, I guess, I know this is going to be a real raw number because nobody knows how many children are going to be moving, but do they have an ideal number of children that they think will be coming into, on the school systems? And potentially populating the schools?
These apartments are actually, the way these apartments are, are market, are being marketed and their price point, it is actually not expected to bring in families with children at all, both because of the style of the apartments and the fact that the, everything about the apartments, the, the configurations, the lifestyle, the way it's being marketed, everything, really being marketed towards a combination of, of, you know, young millennials who don't have kids yet, and folks who are downsizing, older folks who are downsizing from houses, and who want that, that sort of work, you know, work, travel lifestyle where you're, where you're basically living right next to where you shop, and right next to the train and such. So, the, the expectation is that there will not be many children, many, if any, children at all living in this new complex.
Okay, now we're talking.
Commissioner Spiegelman, can I speak to this one real?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Case, Commissioner Thompson also would like to, to answer your point, your, your question. So, go ahead, Commissioner Thompson.
Thanks, President Spiegelman. Ms. Kate, and without speaking for the school district, but typically, school districts in Pennsylvania are required to do a, a master plan every 10 years or so, and as part of that master plan, they typically do a demographic study. And when I say demographics, I'm talking mainly on population, population growth, and population density. And when they do that study, generally, there is a projection of growth based on current developments. This school district, I think, did there's a couple of years ago, this Brandalini application that we're reviewing tonight, this Baderwood one, has been on the books for about 10 years, I believe. So I believe the numbers for this apartment development are already built into the demographic study that the school district has, has published and put out, and used as a precipitous to realign the grade structures after the high school addition project is, is completed. But your, your best bet really is to reach out to the school district and find out how they calculated those numbers and what their projections are based on.
That's not my question at all, that is not my question at all. I'm not asking for a calculation for the state of Pennsylvania. I'm talking about Abington Township and the schools for Abington Township. The reason I'm.
Yeah, Ms. Kate, Ms. Kate, it is, it's based on Abington, the school district, Abington School District has to do this once every 10 years.
You did not let me finish. People live here because this, the school is a good school, and the classrooms aren't crowded. When my children went to school, there were 23 kids in a classroom. No kid should be in a classroom with 30 students or more, or they might, they might as well live in Philadelphia. Now, I understand the demographic you're saying should be for millennials or empty nesters, but millennials have oops babies like everybody else, so they're going to have a child. So that, that needs to be taken in consideration. And again, I don't want a crowded neighborhood in Baderwood because I shop there. I don't want a crowded neighborhood in Willow Grove because I live there. I don't want a crowded neighborhood here. Like I said, we, we, we've already ingested a few problems from people migrating in here. Like I said, back in the day, everybody was family, everybody was neighbors. Now everybody's strangers. Well, strangers are unpredictable, and we have to be careful of that. Instead of, you know, we want to increase, increase capacity and living space, but we're, we're going to destroy a lifestyle. I'm done, I, I gave my piece.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kate. All right, we have, we have one more person with their hand up, Mr. Morse. Could you please let Mr. Morse in?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm addressing, obviously, the Baderwood land development. I think Ms. Kate certainly brought up an excellent point, and as former president of the Abington School Board for 10 years, I'd just like to point out that while the school district does get projections, 90% of those projections are not correct. So, I think she has an excellent point, and I think it's imperative that the township, both the school district and the township, because they're the ones that are voting on this, take that into consideration. Second thing I, I'm concerned about is there's only one path up to, or one road up to these apartments. I think that's not a, a good situation for the safety of the residents, safety of the community, and certainly for the health, safety, and welfare of the Abington community, and firefighters, and ambulance, and things like that. So I'm very, very concerned about that. I'm also concerned, and I expressed this years ago, about how the apartments are backed right up against that embankment. Fire trucks can't get back there, no one can get back there, so I'm very concerned. And I think the township and the commissioners should take that into consideration, please. And I'm also concerned about the traffic on, on the fairways because I know there's going to be two lights. There's a lot of people over in Riddle East and Riddle West. And while it's professed that that's going to make it safer, I beg to differ with you on that because I think it's going to be a lot of stop and go as residents can come in and cross over. They're going to push the light, push the button, there's going to be backups and things like that. I think it's an overcommitment, an overbuild. It's too many apartments in a small area. I would like the commissioners to vote no against this, this application, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morse. All right, now, we are, I believe we are finished with, we finished with resident comments. So now we are going to turn to the consent agenda, and for that, Ward 1 Commissioner and Board Vice President, Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. I will make a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda, items A through C, as they're listed in this evening's meeting materials, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Vice President Hecker. Now for Board of Commissioners' new business, we will turn right back to Ward 1 Commissioner and Board Vice President, Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. We have one item under Board of Commissioners' new business this evening. This is B O C dash 02 dash 021121. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21 dash 005 ratifying the Declaration of Disaster and State of Emergency from January 28, 2021 to February 11, 2021, and approving the declaration through February 18, 2021, and I so move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
And that concludes the Board of Commissioners' new business.
Thank you very much, Vice President Hecker. And now, new business of the Land Use Committee, so we turn to Land Use Committee Chair and Ward 6 Commissioner, Mike Thompson.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Tonight, we have two items on our new business, Land Use Committee meeting agenda. Item number one is L U dash 01 dash 021121, which is a motion to approve the preliminary final land development application of Baderwood Residential Properties, L P, for the property located at the fairway to construct a 244-unit apartment building with associated improvements and grant all requested waivers subject to the applicant's voluntary agreement to continue negotiations with the adjacent property owner to acquire secondary access to the property for firefighting equipment per SALDO Section 146 dash 41 point B1D. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Weingrad, because this is, this is in Ward 7, is there anything you'd like to say to start us off?
Thank you, President Spiegelman. This, this application has been vetted. This application's been out there since, it looks like the zoning hearing board heard this in 2017 and 2018 and approved it. The land use plan came through, there's been a number of iterations. We heard at the last meeting from Fire Marshal Roar that said that the fire trucks can get up there, this is a safe project. There are some pedestrian improvements to the fairway, and at this point, as far as I'm concerned, it's been vetted. And there's really not much more to talk about. So, I don't know if anybody else has any comments about that, but that was my main concern, is this, is this building safe? And according to Fire Marshal Roar and the experts, it is. So for that reason, you know, I think this should move forward.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Weingrad. I'm going to just quickly scroll through everybody. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? And if I don't see you, please feel free to shout out, I am trying to scroll through everyone here. Forgive my, my technological limitations tonight. All right. Okay, hearing none. If anyone, if anyone wants to shout out if I missed you, please shout out. Otherwise, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
I believe that was one opposed.
One opposed, commissioners opposed.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion pass.
Motion carries, thank you very much, Liz. Back to you, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Our next item on the agenda this evening is L U dash 02 dash 021121, which is a motion to approve the Hunter Soccer Club land development application to construct a new synthetic turf field at Pembren Park. And I so move.
Second.
Second, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Thompson, this is, this is in Ward 6, any, any comments? I know we've been through this a couple of times.
Yeah, nothing, nothing new since the last time we heard this one. Generally, I get the sense, and, and I've heard from residents of Ward 6 that are totally supportive of this project, as am I, and, and we would like to see it move forward tonight, if possible. So please, vote in favor of this, if you may. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Again, if I don't recognize you right away, please shout out. All right, hearing none?
Commissioner President, sorry, this is Cal Hassan, the township engineer.
Oh, yes.
If I could, I just want to clarify a couple of items, if I may.
Sure.
There are a couple waivers that, that are indicated to be, to be granted, although the applicant does not need them, I'd like to clarify this for the record. One of them is the MPDS permit, which is a permit that is required by D E P or Montgomery County Conservation District for stormwater activities. The applicant is complying with this, and therefore, a waiver is not required from this. And the second one is the escrow. The applicant is providing an escrow, and therefore, no, no waiver is going to be required from this. I'd like to clarify this for the record. I may state the section for that, if, if possible. Otherwise, I can work with the manager and solicitor on these clarifications.
I think that's fine, unless anyone wants, wants that particularly stated. If anyone does, please raise your hand or shout out. But otherwise, thank you very much for those clarifications, Cal.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from, from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes the land use agenda for this evening. Thank you, President Spiegelman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Thompson. Now moving on to the new business of the Finance Committee, and Finance Committee Chair and Ward 12 Commissioner, Matt Vehi.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the agenda, I'll call on our Treasurer, Jay Blumenthal for a report.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehi. We only have one report tonight, and that's for the Abington Township revenues deposited into the Republic Bank for the month of January, and the total of $1,233,081, compared to last year of $1,277,460. There's a decrease for this past month of $44,379, and that is my report. And as for the real estate taxes, the bills were mailed out last week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. And the next item on the agenda for the Finance Committee tonight is F C dash 01 dash 021121, and it's a motion to approve the December 2020 expenditures in the amount of $3,863,246, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,180,716, and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as we make sure for the month of March 2021. Nice and move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, can we please have the roll call?
Commissioners Thompson?
Yes.
Brodsky?
Yeah, I think he left for a moment.
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brodsky had to leave for just a short little bit. He'll be returning in the whole.
Okay, Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Carswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Suppan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Diplosito?
Yes.
Commissioner Weingrad?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehi?
Yes.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes.
Commissioner Hecker?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Yes, motion carries.
And that concludes the business of the Finance Committee this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Vehi. Now we are going to go to public comments on general, general matters. And hang on just one second, please. All right, we have one, we have one hand up, so if you could please let in Ms. Lehman. I'm sorry, we have, we have another hand up, so please let in Ms. Lehman first, and then Mr. Bazaco.
Ms. Lehman, your microphone is unmuted on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so, first of all, you are again in violation of the law, Commissioner Spiegelman. You refuse my right to interrupt the meeting and declare a perceived public comment violation per the Sunshine Law. So please note that, again, you're in violation. You're also further in violation of the law because three minutes was declared the reasonable time to speak, and you have not provided three minutes for any of the, the options that, the items that you have. And, again, the agenda itself, new business, old business, you keep adding something every week. You now have a B O C, Board of Commissioners section. There's no Board of Commissioners Committee. So you just keep moving everything around, this is Mr. Manfredi's hallmark, and it should stop. Everything should go back to the committees they belong on, so they can be found. There's no benefit to having the item dealt with under new business or old business, except to confuse people. Put the things back in their correct order, and then people know what meeting it's going to be held at. Again, 15 commissioners and manager and solicitor and planner all sat through bogus presentation that you all know is bogus, and the residents don't yet know. What was in the submission from Mr. Kaplan and Preet and Belcanto on the Willow Grove Mall was absolutely not what was presented at any of those meetings. And it allows for way, way more development, but we don't know how much development because we don't know how exactly they're calculating that. So we need to have that corrected. And it should be corrected immediately with an open meeting where questions can be asked openly and a full, proper presentation is given. And that should happen before the Planning Commission. At the very least, at the Planning Commission, it should be an open meeting where we can ask the questions and get the answers that they have withheld. Okay, that is absolutely believable. And that you just approved a, as Mr. Morse said, you know, a building with an entire side. How did you even design that? How did you not require them to take apartments away and move it over so a fire truck could get through? How did you start that way? And then, secondly, after that, you allowed them to not even have a waiver? They didn't even have to fill out a waiver and get a waiver approved? Because what, then you would be complicit for giving a waiver on something that shouldn't have had a waiver? So apparently, they're required to still keep looking for that second access, but it wasn't wavered. It's a requirement of our SALDO. But our fire marshal decided he could waiver it without a waiver? Nothing is right here. This is all wrong.
Ms. Lehman, your, your time has expired, thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. Could you please let in Mr. Bazaco? Mr. Bazaco, could you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. My name's Mark Bazaco, I'm at 103 Edgell Road. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that our current marijuana laws in the state are for minor possession, which is under 30 grams, is currently either 30 days in jail, a $500 fine, or the option. thirty days in jail, a five hundred dollar fine, or the option of one year of probation. If, if you get caught with a second offense, you will have double the penalty. We also have our own paraphernalia laws in Abington Township, which equate to a three hundred dollar fine or thirty days in jail. I've talked to hundreds of people in the township, and I've spoken with Chief Patrick Malloy on this issue, and I've, I've heard nobody think that those are reasonable situations for, for handling this. We're, we're literally taking peaceful people and making them criminals. We're burdening our police department, and we're burdening our penal system. Recently, just in Montgomery County, Norristown and West Norton have both decriminalized minor possession of marijuana. There's also been many other municipalities across the state, including Harrisburg, Lancaster, York, Philadelphia. So I'm coming here today to ask the Board of Commissioners to consider taking up similar legislation as Norristown did, where we can reduce these jail times and fines down to as small as twenty-five dollars, where we're not hurting peaceful people. I don't know what the procedures are for you guys to take up action on this, but I would be willing to support and help you guys in any way, showing you legislation that's out there and possibly helping the Safety Commission or whatever. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bazaco. I know this is a matter that, that has come up in, in discussion, so I want to very, very briefly turn to Public Safety Chair and Ward Fourteen Commissioner, Lori Schreiber, for, for a brief sentence on this. Lori?
Thank you very much. So I did get your email earlier, but I just got it before the meeting, so I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to answer that. But I did want you to know that we are already looking at this. We do have those other different ordinances from other municipalities. Our solicitor is looking at this. I have also talked to Chief Malloy and Manager Manfredi and both the President and Vice President. It will be coming up. We've been looking at this for the last couple of months, but obviously, the world is, a lot's going on right now. So it will be coming up to the Committee of the Hall in, I'm not sure which month, but coming up soon, and we can certainly let you know when it does come up. But we are already looking at changing this small amounts to citation only.
Many thanks for, for that and for that heads up as well, Commissioner Schreiber. And we finally, we have Mr. Kropchuk. Mr. Kropchuk could please be allowed in. Mr. Kropchuk, can you, can you hear us? Mr. Kropchuk?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, Mr. Kropchuk.
You can? Yes?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. My name is Ken Kropchuk. I live at one seventeen West Avenue in the McKinley section of Abington, and it's good to hear Laura's voice. Hi, Laura, it's been a long time. Just as a way of introduction, I ran for Township Commissioner four times over the past twenty years, and it's good to see some of you are still there. Commissioner Schreiber, it's good to see you too, and a few others. I'm here to back up what Mark Bazaco was just talking about. My first race, when I first joined the Libertarian Party back in nineteen ninety-four, the first issue that I came out publicly against was when the school district decided to have automatic police involvement for any kind of a drug offense. And my concern was that how many lives were ruined? How many children's lives were ruined by that just because they may have made a youthful mistake or something like that? Well, fortunately, a couple of weeks after the, the process was put in place, it was quietly taken away. And I can't help but think, how many children's lives, not just children, but young adults or older adults? How many lives have been ruined by the current cannabis laws in this state? And I, I can't help but think, why are we doing this? The danger level of cannabis, it's, it's not as dangerous as alcohol. It's not as dangerous as a cigarette. Why are we ruining so many children's, grownups, everybody's lives over this? So I agree, the time has come to revisit it, and I know Mark mentioned a couple of fines involved. I don't even think we should have fines. I mean, if somebody's being a real idiot about it, then yeah. And I can see reasonable limits on it, like not in public or something like that. But generally speaking, we should stop doing that because you're going to lose chances for scholarships, you're going to lose chances for a federal job, you're going to have a criminal record, and all for what? For nothing. So I'm here to say, please, let's change the law. Because even with the prisons, I have a soundbite from my governor campaign. I ran for governor, and the soundbite that I had was, "We're releasing murderers and rapists from our overcrowded prisons to make room for pot-smoking, grateful dead fans." That's insane. That's absolutely insane. So I'm asking you now, please consider changing the law. I'd be more than happy to help. I haven't seen you guys in a couple of years, and it'd be good to be back into it again. So if there's anything I can do, feel free to give me a call, get in touch with me. My email is info, I N F O, at kenk dot org. And please, let's change that law. Do it for the children.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kropchuk, for, for sharing your thoughts. All right, before we, before we end the meeting, I do need to announce that at, at the, following this, obviously, is the Committee of the Hall meeting, as always. Following that, there's going to be a Board Executive Session on a litigation matter. But before we conclude, I would like to turn to my, to my friends, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Vaughn, to share some thoughts about, very special friend of the township that we lost just, just a few days ago. Commissioner Myers, if I can turn to you first, please.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Ashley, if you could, if you could put the pictures up. Pictured here are, is a woman that we all know very well, and sadly, we lost her earlier this week. Her name is Valerie Ward. Valerie was the consummate volunteer. And I would like to just speak tonight a little bit about her volunteerism, specifically with Abington PAL, because she put in a tremendous amount of time with PAL. However, besides PAL, Valerie served on a hospital board. She was president of Willow Grove NAACP since two thousand and eleven. She was a volunteer for community policing, for ACT, for CAPT, very active in her church. She was with Roseland Town Lodge for many years, and she was a member of the youth aid panel since its inception. As I said, I wanted to talk about her volunteer service with PAL. But when you add up all of those organizations, it's incredible with her volunteer hours to imagine that she had any time at all to herself. She worked at PAL as a volunteer every Friday and Saturday night since two thousand and one, and she greeted the children as they came in. She knew their names. She watched them, and when someone, when someone got out of line, Ms. Val had a way of rolling her eyes and giving you the look, and you knew, you better straighten out. She did not demand respect, but she commanded it. And when I, when I looked tonight on her Facebook page and all of the people that wrote about her, I wanted to, I pulled some words because I felt that these were the words that truly described Ms. Val. She was fair and strong, humble, selfless in her service, and absolutely a great leader, quiet but deadly. She was meant so much to us, and it's very, it's going to be very hard for our PAL to go on, to go on without her. But we, but we will. And she did all of this because she liked to be active, and she liked to be around people. She made Abington a better place to live for all of us, and for that, we thank her. And I thank you for allowing me to, to speak about her tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Myers. Sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't actually know that her picture's going to put up. You're really, I, that really hit me. Commissioner, Commissioner Vaughn, I'd like to turn to you as well, please.
Ms. Val and I share something very, very much in common. I'm sorry. Being a part of Black Greek sororities is something that we are taught to uplift the community, to constantly serve, to always be on our A-game, to always have our head held high, to mentor others, to just be a light for other people, and she was that here. I was shocked when I heard, when I received the information that she had passed, and all I could think of was in August, when we met before I was even a commissioner, and we met at the clubhouse with the former commissioner for Ward Five, and she said, "Listen, I'm old. I need somebody else to step in and do this work, and I need you and whoever else you can get to come on because I am tired." And then she sent me a message on Facebook, and after that, it was just, we were in constant communication, and her being a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha, which is the same sorority that Kamala Harris, the Vice President, is a part of. She also lost a sorority sister a few days before she passed herself, so at least there is reverence in knowing that she did not go alone. I don't know that there will be a person like her here ever again. And I am grateful that I got to meet her and talk to her, and just like Peggy said, she did not demand respect, but you were going to respect her. That, yeah, she was, she was not having anything other than that. And I am sorry, I'm crying like a baby, but these pictures are killing me right now.
No apology, no apology necessary, Commissioner Vaughn. Thank you very much, Commissioner Vaughn and Commissioner Myers. And I'll just conclude the meeting by, excuse me, by saying, thank you, Ms. Val. We will never forget you, Ms. Val. God bless you, Ms. Val. With that, we are adjourned to the Committee of the Hall. Thank you. Stay safe.